Good evening and welcome. I'm Andrea Mulrain. I'm on the board of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County, and I'm so thrilled that you're all here with us this evening as we host a debate with the candidates for the Democratic Party for Lackawanna County Commissioner. If you're interested in the Republican candidates, they've already debated this evening, and that debate will be available on ECTV and also on the League's website at LWVlackawanna.org. And I think the date is May 8th for all of that we're doing will be available on the website. We also will be interviewing candidates for Lackawanna County Clerk of Judicial Records and the Scranton City Controller and Scranton School Board members. All of those interviews will take place this Saturday on May 1st and will be available on the League's website on May 8th, and they'll be available sooner than that, I believe, on ECTV. So keep your eye open for all of those races. In addition, there are quite a few judicial candidate races or judicial races on the ballot this year: Justice of the Supreme Court, Judge of the Superior Court, Judge of the Commonwealth Court, and Judge of the Court of Common Pleas. The League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania, in conjunction with Pennsylvanians for Modern Courts, will host debates with the candidates for Pennsylvania Supreme Court. The Democratic candidates will debate on Wednesday, April 29th, starting at 5:00 PM, and the Republican candidates on Thursday, April 30th, at 5:00 PM. And you can check to see those particular debates on the Pennsylvania Cable Network, PCN, if you're interested in watching them. And I find that it's a great way to learn something about those judicial candidates, which I find very hard to really connect with well when we're in the election season. So it's a great way to find out what they're all about. We are here this evening, as I said, with the Democratic candidates now for Lackawanna County Commissioner, and I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce the candidates to you. They are seated on the stage in alphabetic order, and it just so happens that alphabetically they're sitting next to their running mates as well. None of the candidates have been given any of the questions in advance by us, and all of the questions will have a two-minute time limit. We ask the candidate to try to adhere to that as much as possible. There are no opening statements, and each candidate will have an opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement. We did draw straws or names, as the case may be, before we got started, and Jim Wanzak will answer the first question first, and he will also give the first closing statement by the luck of the draw. So our first candidate this evening is Thomas Lukasevich, and he is from Troop. His wife is Bernadine, and he has four children. He's a graduate of Mid Valley High School and owner of Thomas J. Lukasevich General Contracting. He has past experience as a prison guard, as a Troop Councilman from 1994 to the president, and he was council president about 18 years. Welcome, Tom. We appreciate your time here this evening.
Thank you for having me here.
Jerry Notteriani, hometown is Scranton. His wife is Susan, and he has a daughter and a son. He's a graduate of Scranton Central High School and attended Wilkes College. He is the owner of AIT Auto Parts from 1971 to the present, and he has experience as the chairman of the Scranton City Democratic Party, chairman of Lackawanna County Democratic Party. He served as Lackawanna County Register of Wills and was a member of the Lackawanna County Government Study Commission from 2013 to 2014. Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you.
Patrick O'Malley, incumbent commissioner, hometown is Scranton. His wife is Christine. His sons, Patrick and Vincent. He's a graduate of West Scranton High School. He is currently, as I said, Lackawanna County Commissioner. He has been in the past a member of the Scranton School Board. He's been a prison guard for Lackawanna County, assistant of the Parks and Recreation Director, banquet manager also at Fiorelli Catering, which is a family business. Welcome, Pat. And Commissioner Jim Wanzak, again, an incumbent. Old Forge is his hometown. His wife, Maria, and he has a daughter, Nadia, and a son, Jace. Education, he's a graduate of Lakeland High School, bachelor's degree in business administration from Indiana University of Pennsylvania with a minor in economics, and he's pursuing a master's degree in public administration at Marywood University. He is currently, as I said, Lackawanna County Commissioner. He previously served as a state representative in the 114th Pennsylvania House District, and he's managed Hart Lake Lodge, a Scott Township family business, and he's been a business development representative for Commonwealth Energy Group in Dixon City. Welcome, Jim. We appreciate all of your participation here this evening. Without further ado, we'll get started with the first question. So, and again, Jim, you'll answer the first question. What specific skills do you bring to the job, and why should voters choose you over your opponents? Again, all the questions have a two-minute time limit.
Well, one, I think you've highlighted that. I've been a state representative for 10 years. I've been an incumbent county commissioner for the past three years. The skills that I bring to the table are ones of being able to balance budgets, to be able to create jobs, to be able to come up with innovative programs, and think outside of the box. When we first started out in county government, we were faced with a $1.8 million budget deficit. Today, we are sitting on an $8.4 million budget surplus, and we did that by being creative and thinking outside of the box. We asked our government departments to do more with less. We implemented a zero-based budgeting model. We've put in performance management to see what programs are effective and what programs aren't. We looked at leases. We consolidated leases. We consolidated offices. What we bring to the table is the experience to get things done, and I believe our track record over the last three years points that out.
Thank you. Tom, the question goes to you.
Okay. I would have to say probably the best quality that I possess is that I'm a people person. Throughout my life, I have listened to people, and I have the skill of listening to them deeply and what their concerns are, and I know how important it is to hear the voices of the average person in Lackawanna County and have them represented at the level of county commissioner. My doors will always be open to these people, and they can't feel afraid to come and talk to me. I've been very fortunate in my life that I've had a lot of good people around me that have taught me a lot of skills, and one of them is the skills that I learned as a carpenter and my business ethic that I have. I am probably the hardest-working individual that most people would ever run into. I start early in the morning. I don't stop till it's late at night, and usually when I sleep at night, I still do my work. Any way it's a small business owner can understand that, and that's one of my biggest skills. And then the other thing, I've been very fortunate to be re-elected six consecutive times on Troop Borough Council. So the people respect me, and they know that I can do the job, and that's really important to me because the people respect me. And I'll just bring a whole different kind of government to Lackawanna County. The people will have a voice, and they'll be heard.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you.
I think the advantage that I have over it is I run a business every day. It's difficult. It's tough in these economic times with the tax burdens that we have to do that. I think I can bring a different perspective to government. I was elected in the past. I did not seek reelection. I have not been a person that has been on the public payroll my entire life. I think I'm looking at things differently than most people do. I have to make payroll, have to pay taxes. It's difficult all the time. I think I can look at things totally differently. I think I have the ability to make a real change in our county government. We have to go forward. We can't continue to do the things the way we've been doing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you.
Yes. My experience starts off as a business owner, business owner of a large...
Pat, excuse me. Can you pull that phone? Thank you.
Sure. A business owner over a large catering facility that saw tragedy, fires in the past, a lot of different situations that occurred, and we always rebounded and made sure that our business moved forward. We made sure our employees were paid on time. All of our bills were paid on time, and everything was taken care of, that our business was up and running well. As a school director, I had an opportunity to be involved with probably one of the largest projects in the city, the building of the new Scranton High School. For those of you in the audience that can remember, 1997, the Providence Road section of Scranton was the most blighted part of Lackawanna County. Order-up buildings, Grossman's was closed, the expressway was just being rebuilt. There was nothing in the community whatsoever. I was part of a board, and it was a negative time at that point. People did not want to build a new school. We built that school. They came. And what I mean "they came," all of the industry moved right in immediately after the school. We were the acorn that grew the large tree, and the tree was Scranton High School. And what grew alongside of Scranton High School was Riverfront, the Icebox, Sonic, Redners, Mount Pleasant, and all of the other businesses that are growing at this point right now. And for those of you who are joggers or like to go walking or go for a run, the Heritage Valley Trail is there because of all of the work that was done because of Scranton High School, and I was a big part of that. And it was a tough decision, and it was actually a 5-4 vote. As a commissioner, our first three months in government was probably the toughest three months that I ever had in my political life. We were faced with either tearing down the stadium, or we were going to be left with a hall that would sit there that would cost at least a million dollars to tear down. And a situation that had occurred was when they built the stadium 16 years before, or in 1986, the actual land was already deeded out, and if it was not used for baseball, we'd have to actually tear down the facility.
Thank you.
It would cost this large amount of money.
Thank you, Pat. Tom, you'll answer this next question first. The Times Tribune is running a series of four articles. I'm sure you're all aware of it since they're interviewing you for it. And the first article that appeared on April 19th, the headline for it is "Budget and Taxes Loom As Top Commissioner Issues." So my question to you, to all of you, is what is the solution for the budget? Why is that the biggest issue that we're facing? What can you tell us about all of that?
Okay. I believe one of the biggest issues involved with the budget is that we have to do a reassessment. And that's the word that a lot of people don't want to hear, but it's the first step in bringing all the citizens of Lackawanna County onto the same page. With reassessment, if it's done properly and it's planned accordingly and done the way that I believe I can do it, I have a plan to do it. I have a plan on how to pay for it. I have a plan on how to implement it. I have a five-year process of how it can be done. I have it done in such a way that it will not hurt anybody. It won't hurt the wealthy. It won't hurt the middle class, and it most definitely will not hurt the elderly or the lower class. When it's done, the amount of monies and revenues that can come into the county and to the school districts and everyone that needs the money will make Lackawanna County a better place to start advancement. With that in line, we can get enough money into the county through the taxes that we could be more stable, and once we are more stable, then we could work tirelessly to bring in the economic development that is truly needed for Lackawanna County. We need jobs, 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 and jobs, and I will do anything I can to bring the jobs here because that's the important part of making the budget work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you, please.
Thank you. I think the most important part is that we can't continue to raise property taxes and drive people out. We have to try to do something to make it better to live here, to work here. I think we have to do revenue enhancement projects, such as a land bank. We have to try to look at things differently. It's not working. We looked at videos from when I ran for mayor 25 or 30 years ago. It's the same issues. Everyone says that they're doing economic development. It hasn't happened. 25 years later, it's still the same issue. We have to think differently. We have to work differently. We have to elect different people. We have to start to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you, please.
Well, you know, we're the stewards of the taxpayers' money. It's incumbent upon us to make sure that the money is used properly. And in our administration, the last three years or four months, we've done that. We've not filled positions. We've consolidated Colton and Coordinated Transport. We work with our deputy directors every day to live within their budget, and it's worked. It's worked on behalf of the 214,000 citizens of Lackawanna County, and we're a testament to that. And I'm not sure about Mr. Notteriani, but I did not raise taxes in the three years or four months that I've been in office. That's fact.
Thank you. Jim, the question to you, please.
Well, first off, I think I got to correct just some facts. As you heard, nobody talked about our budget. They didn't talk about our budget because our budget's in great shape. When we started in 2011, we inherited a $1.8 million budget deficit. Today, we're at an $8.4 million surplus. When we talk about reassessment, that's going to cost $8 million to bring in $1.5 million revenue. There is no special plan. You can't do that. It's a state law that you have to follow. There's a rule that allows only 5% revenue growth on top of that. There's a 1/3 rule that is usually followed. 1/3 of the property taxes go down, 1/3 of the property taxes go up, 1/3 stay the same. And I'm telling you what, under that rule that's currently in place, that every single county in the state of Pennsylvania has a problem with reassessment, it's going to cost our senior citizens and those that cannot afford any property tax increases the most. So our lower-income people, those who've lived in their homes the longest. But what have we done for our budget? Well, our actions have backed that up. We have three audits done on time, the first time in Lackawanna County history. Three audits done on time. So don't take our word for it. Read the audits because they're done. We implemented a zero-based budgeting. We put in performance management results. We're thinking outside of the box. We consolidated services. One of the things we did was we asked all of our staffs to do more with less. On the day we came into office, we interviewed every one of our departments, and we asked them, "What can we be doing differently?" We don't want to keep following the same old, same old politics of the past because the politics of the past don't work. Talk about economic development. Economic development was at 9.5% when we started. It's at 5% now, 5.9%. We put an economic development office in. We created nationally economic development programs. We partnered with chambers, with private businesses, with our communities to improve this area. Nobody talked about it because guess what? Because we did it. That's why it's not an issue.
Thank you. The next question, Jerry, will go to you first. So I want to talk specifically about the county's long-term debt and how that could be retired. If you don't support tax increases, but there's an alternate revenue source, please cite the estimated revenue, and please, I don't want to hear "cutting wasteful spending is a way to deal with an issue because it's not a specific solution and therefore not an acceptable answer."
I understand that, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And I would like to clear one thing up. Tom and I are not running mates. We are...
I apologize. That was my error.
That's fine. The long-term debt, and I understand there are situations where we do have to borrow money to create economic development, whether it's the stadium, which was a great project, or whatever it is, but that's a burden on the taxpayers. Specifically, a land bank would help. It would get more properties back on the tax rule. It would get people to develop and to pay property taxes. A reassessment would get it going in the right direction. To say that every county has an issue with that, that's true, and it's not. The problem is, all the progressive counties find it where it is something that is to the benefit of the taxpayers. It's something that needs to be done. It's something that politicians and political office holders choose not to do because it's dangerous for their position. It's something that has to be done. It's something that we need to do. We do have to protect the senior citizens, and I understand that part of it, and there should be, and there is a way that we can try to protect them to do that. But we can't continue to keep going the same way we've been going for the last 20, 30 years and expect things to change. It's not going to change. It just is not going to happen. We do the same things over and over and over again, and nothing changes. 25 years ago, 25 years later, we're looking at the same problems. Our kids can't come back. We have to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you. What are the specific solutions to resolve the county's long-term debt?
Being fiscally responsible. And the way to be fiscally responsible is making sure that we're going out every day trying to draw businesses to our community, trying to broaden our tax base, and that's something that we've done along the way with our SBA loan waivers. We're trying to make the small businesses into bigger businesses.
Pat, excuse me. Can you pull that microphone closer? Thank you.
That's one of the ways that we're trying to make the area more financially secure, and it's worked along the way. That's why at this point, we have an $8.4 million fund balance. Lackawanna County Government, in my history, and I do not remember us ever having a fund balance of $8.4, or any other governments that we've ever been involved in, and that's because we're watching how we're spending the money on behalf of the taxpayers every single day, and that's why we have that amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, the question to you. The county's long-term debt.
Sure. First off, politics of the past. It's the same old stuff. When we hear the county hasn't changed anything, the only thing that's staying the same is the people promising things that aren't true, and that's what gets us in trouble. We have two commissioners sitting in jail because they promised things that they couldn't deliver on. What you have is a record, a record from Pat O'Malley and Jim Wanzak on getting things done, and I want to make that clear. When things didn't get done, we have a nationally-recognized economic development program right here in Lackawanna County. I don't know if that's ever been done before. Three audits done, and the first time in the history of county government. That's never been done before. $8.4 million surplus. Has that ever been done before? I mean, you look at what we're doing. We struck a unique agreement to save baseball here and make sure that baseball stadium is going to be here 29 years from today because it's already one year in. That is going to be in the same shape as it opened up. That has never been done before. Never. And you know what? It's not costing the town, the taxpayers of Lackawanna County, one dime. You want to talk about long-term debt? Well, we've managed that. We haven't kicked the can down the road like so many people want to talk about. Let's borrow money. What we did is we are currently paying about $19 million a year in debt payments, and we're leveraged out to about $2,038. None of that is from us. What we're doing is we're inheriting debt payments. We are negotiating a lower interest rate to save money and not extend the life of the loan. When do you ever hear governments doing that? You know why? That's looking forward down the road. Pat and I, we both have young kids. We want our kids to grow up here. We want our kids to know the quality of life that we have here in Lackawanna County, and we do have a great quality of life. That's why so many people want to come back here. We have good people. We have opportunity. We hosted a free job fair that, guess what? Identified 6,400 job openings, some jobs that pay over $100,000 a year. We are thinking outside our box. We are doing innovative things that no commissioner has done before.
Thank you. Tom, the question to you, please.
Borrowing of money must stop and will stop when I take office. We can't live knowing that the debt outseeds what our sources of revenue are. Life's lessons have taught me many things, and one of the most important things that life has taught me is that afford what you can pay for. I would love to have a brand-new truck. I drive a 2007 Chevy pickup. Be smart, be prudent, look to the future. If you have too much debt, you cannot look to the future. You have to erase that debt. You have to be aggressive in the way that you erase that debt. You have to think outside the box. You have to say, "Stop spending." Look at every avenue of revenue coming in, dissect it, analyze it, project how you could go into the future and make it the most cost-effective way to govern Lackawanna County. If you look at it like an average homeowner and you think to yourself, "You need to have money set aside for that bad time that happens." That's the way I would look at it. You have to analyze it, be very prudent, and you have to say, "Spending has to stop. I only need what I need. Lackawanna County only needs what Lackawanna County needs." Does Lackawanna County need baseball like it has been? Maybe, but I can only relate to it one way. My father told me this many years ago, and I loved to play baseball. He said to me, "Tommy, baseball is not everything." Until you become wiser and older in life, you realize baseball is not much of anything. It's only a pastime. It doesn't affect us the way that important decisions affect us, how we pay for our bills. We must be very prudent, and that's the way I would address it.
Okay, thank you. Pat, you want to use one of your rebuttals?
I'll take that to finish up my first question and answer has.
And pull that microphone over so we can all hear you.
We were in a situation where baseball was going to be leaving our community, and we were going to be left with a hall that was going to have to be torn down. It was $1 million. We didn't even own the property. We took a $43 million stadium, put it into Montage Mountain. It rolled in jobs over a year for Union Brothers and Sisters to come and work at. It provides part-time jobs, full-time jobs, and it's part of the quality of life of Lackawanna County. That's what baseball does for our community, and it draws people to our community to spend money at hotels and gas stations and utilize our community for all the great opportunities that are here. That's what it does for it. It isn't something that's just there. It's something that affects us and is with us every single day, and I think it was one of this administration that was hallmark to our first four years, was making sure that that stadium went through and making sure that baseball stayed here for the next 30 years. And to go a little further into that, it will not cost the taxpayers another penny for baseball in Lackawanna County. In the past, taxpayers paid for refurbishment projects. They will not have to pay for it in the future, and I'll explain that in another rebuttal.
Thank you. Pat, you actually get to answer the next question first. So here's the question for you. Imagine that you have been asked to speak with a business or company that is considering relocating to the county. What would you tell them about the county to sell it to them, and what promises, if any, would you be willing to make to get them to relocate?
Well, going to the economic toolbox, and we talk about how we have Wi-Fi, how we have an opportunity to save them on the startup charges to be able to get all of their computerization needs up and running. Second, we're in close proximity to major metropolitan cities with a great highway system. Third, we would be talking to them about our great colleges and great institutions of education that could actually fill these businesses with the employees that they need. And then last but not least, I would be talking about the work ethic of the people of Lackawanna County that's been here for over 150 years, and that's would be our selling points. And they're the selling points we use every day when we're trying to sell this community, which we have over the last three years and four months. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, the question goes to you.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Imagine that you have been asked to speak with a business or company that is considering relocating to the county. What would you tell them about the county to sell it to them, and what promises, if any, would you be willing to make to get them to relocate?
Well, first of all, we don't have to imagine. We do that. We are doing it right now. We've been doing that. We've been able to, it's not only about job creation. It's about job growth. It's about job retention. We have a plan in place right now that anybody can go with. We partnered with the Scranton Plan. We listed everything that you're talking about right now. So if any resident wants to see the benefits that we have going on in Lackawanna County, go to the plan and look at it. We offer a great geographical location. We have some of the finer, highest institutions of higher learning. We're sitting in one of them right now at the University of Scranton, and thank you for having us here tonight. We have so many colleges. We're in proximity to so much of the world's geographic location. We are doing all that. But not only that, we put in a wireless broadband network. Why is that important? It's not a wireless network that you'd be thinking, "Oh, here's my free Wi-Fi." This is a broadband network that can save a company millions of dollars in startup costs. We have an infrastructure, we are investing in our infrastructure. We're investing in our quality of life. Because you know what companies are looking for? What do they say when they come into the area? They are looking for the most qualified employees, and to get the most qualified employees, you have to have a quality of life that employees want to stay here and live here. But guess what? We know our kids here want to stay here. We know our people want to stay here because we invest in our quality of life. We invest in our roads and infrastructure. We invest in innovative ideas to keep companies here. We've been doing that for the last four years. We feel good about it. We've put a plan together, but it's not only ourselves. What we realized is we can't do this alone. We must work with public-private partnerships, and that's how we've been working, is communicating. We've been partnering with the Scranton Chamber and Scranton Plan and other economic development[1712.58] economic development opportunities. And in the next coming weeks, I can't say it here at this debate, but you're going to see exactly what we've been working on for two years that are going to encourage businesses to come here, create, expand, and retain jobs. For the first time, there's a partnership that is going to be announced.
Thank you. Tom, the question to you, please.
I would sell to the employers the most valuable thing that we have in Lackawanna County, and that is our, our people and our workforce. I would set up meetings to invite the employers to come in and sit down with a roundtable group of our citizens, people that are involved with the sciences, people that are involved with the technology, people that are involved with the mathematics, people that are involved with the engineering, and at least we forget the people that are involved with the arts. We meet, we need to develop a system, and I, I say it as STEAM, not STEM, but STEAM. We need to move forward fast, like the locomotives of the past of Lackawanna County. We were famous for that. We were once famous as one of the busiest and most productive areas, areas in the state of Pennsylvania. There's no reason we can't sell our best quality, our people. I would, I would tell the employers, do something for me, please. Look into my eyes and understand how, how important it is for me to bring these jobs here. Look into the eyes of the people that I bring together in the open public forum, and I can sell this. We have to sell this. We have to get personal. We have to have a heart. It's the only way that Lackawanna County is going to move forward. If we do the same old things, we're never going anywhere. And I, I have the skills and I have the heart to make sure that it's done.
Thank you. Jerry, the question to you, please.
I, I agree with what commissioners have said and Tom has said, but, but again, it comes back to the reality of we're stuck in the same place over and over and over. Nothing changes. Uh, yeah, I think we have to reach out to people like Terry Pagula, who was from Carbondale, people that have left the area, successful business people, Father McShane, and ask them to help us, put together a council of people to help us help ourselves. This, it, it, it's the same thing. And you hear about the great economic development. Do you see it? I don't. I don't think my kids can come back. Have your kids been able to? Uh, we do have great schools, great universities, great proximity to the New York and Philadelphia, great highway system, all kinds of good things going for us, and we should be much further ahead than we are. Things have not been going the way they should be. Uh, I, I agree with the baseball stadium being a great thing, but not at expense of the taxpayers to a point. Now, it's not, not a taxpayer expense. Well, I find that interesting, but that may be true. I'm not a paid county employee. I have no idea if all the facts are, are correct or not. I only can find out what I can find out. Uh, I still have to run a business. I still have to go to work every day, uh, but I'm really sure that things haven't changed a whole lot in the last twenty-five years. Thank you.
Jim, you wanted to rebut?
Please, I'm just going to use this time to further expand on, on things that we have available because I think this is very important for any business that's looking to, to relocate or expand in Lackawanna County. One, we have a thing called the Workforce Investment Board, where if you're looking to come into the area and hire displacement workers, we'll, we'll provide fifty to ninety-five percent of the employees' training dollars for the first three months. That is a great program that not many people know about. We have an award-winning SBA fee waiver loan program that allows businesses to come in, take advantage of low rates, start business and retain businesses while the county picks up the fees. We have the ability to come in and sit down with an economic developer. They don't want to look into your eyes. They want to know what you can do for them. That's what the, that's what these businesses do. They can relocate anywhere they want in the country. They want to know, why should we locate in Lackawanna County? But we, because this is what we have to offer. They want to know that they can sit down, they can have an open door. They want to know that their permits are not going to be delayed a year. They want to know that, to stakeholders, that we can put them in touch and communicate with the stakeholders. They want to know about higher education. They want to know about what skills we have. This is what we've been doing. And I wish anybody that says we're going to flip a switch and it's going to happen overnight is wrong.
You want another minute or?
No.
You can use, all right.
I'm done.
All right. Thank you.
I'll take it.
You actually, Pat, you wanted, okay.
You know, we formulated Office of Economic Community Development. We didn't formulate that just to hire people. We formulated that to bring businesses into the area and try to find money and pull grant money in to work on behalf of the community. I mean, we're here. Both of us can actually be a business in the private sector, but we choose to be elected officials because we care about what goes on in the community. Both of us do. That's the reason why we want to be Lackawanna County Commissioners. We want to represent the two hundred and fourteen thousand citizens. We want to make sure that there's a quality of life here, which we've been working on. We want to make sure that there's business opportunities for the best and the brightest to stay in Lackawanna County. That's what we're here for. And in three years and four months, we've made a difference. And in the next four, we're going to make more differences than you can, you believe.
Thank you. So Jim, you answer the next question first. And, um, it's a question, uh, we've had a few mentions here of the colleges in the area. There are actually eight colleges and universities located within Lackawanna County. So are we a college county? Do you feel that? What should we be doing to connect better with the colleges? Are there things that the colleges and universities can be doing with the county or for the county that they're not doing at this point?
Yes, we can be doing things better. If you look at what other communities are doing throughout the state, they are working together on the state, the colleges, the locals, the economic developments, the counties, and they're trying to develop stakeholder meetings that can move things forward. That is something that we've been doing collectively, all of us, trying to, to come together for the first time. And I don't know, I don't know if it's ever been done. It might have, so I don't want to say it hasn't been done. But we are all trying to work together to develop a plan and to introduce one another to stakeholders. We have some successes here. We just had a company, Net Driven, that started here with one employee and grew to over seventy employees. And you know what? He sold his business, which undisclosed amount, but I'd imagine it's for a pretty good penny. He didn't do it in Silicon Valley. He did it right here in Lackawanna County. And there, there is entrepreneurs out there, and there is success stories that are out there. And that is happening because we're also developing a unique program. And I'm not sure if anybody remembers this, but it was probably two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. We stood out on Courthouse Square and we developed an internship program. We went around and we were meeting with some of our large businesses. And you know what they told us? They were recruiting kids from outside of the area to come and do internships here in our area. And we said, why are you doing that? They said, because they don't have the, the skills that we're looking for in a major education. And we said, what type of skills are you looking for? They found out, we have universities right here offering those degrees, offering those same type of skills. So it was just a matter of working with the SBA who picked up this program and is running with it and putting them in contact with the right people so we can tell our own people in our area what we have here. And we do have a lot here. And we have kids that can get the job done. So it's just a matter of continuing that communication progress, continuing to believe in ourselves, and continuing to sell ourselves to, to the business community.
Thank you. Tom, the question goes to you.
We are very fortunate to have the amount of universities and colleges in our area. The University of Scranton is probably the finest example of it. It's one of the largest employees, employers in northeastern Pennsylvania. We are fortunate that the universities are probably the most sustaining source of revenue for Lackawanna County and its citizens. The university structure throughout Lackawanna County is wonderful. It provides a lot of jobs for the people, the non-skilled people. It invites a lot of our students in the area to go to these colleges. It gives them the opportunity to go to college if their parents work at that school. We have a lot of opportunities for our, our children. What we need to do is we need to start internships in the Lackawanna County government system. Invite these young kids to do, not paid, but unpaid internships in Lackawanna County. Find out what government is all about. Get them in, excited about government. Get them excited about our area. Get the businesses in our area to give the, the children the opportunity to do internships in Lackawanna County. We don't want to continue to lose our brightest and our best people. It, it's a shame, and I, I know this all too well. I, I have a daughter that lives in, in Washington, and unfortunately, she has a business degree, and that's where she has to be to, to get a lucrative job and be in an area that she loves. But she was just home the last couple of days, and I saw her in her eyes when she gave me a kiss when she was leaving here, and she didn't want to leave Lackawanna County. She didn't want to leave her family. She didn't want to go to someplace where she has no family. We need to keep our, our children here, and, and the colleges probably are our best opportunity to keep our children here.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you, please.
Uh, it, it's great that we have these colleges and universities and schools and, and, uh, trade schools in the area. It, it's something that we have to continue to work with, but we should probably work more closely with. If everything is so, going so well here, why do our kids have to continue to leave? Where's the economic boom? If you look in the Lehigh Valley, you, you can see it. You drive down there. We have a daughter that goes to the sales. You go down there, it's a different world. Our proximity in New York and Philadelphia should make us a great location for a lot of good economic development. And they talk about doing a good job. People talk about it. They've been talking about it for twenty-five or thirty years. Where are they? Why do our kids, who are well-educated, have to continue to leave? It's a question that we have to answer and it's something that we have to change. It's, it's not, we can't continue to keep taxing people and driving businesses out of town. It's a difficult burden. Uh, homeowners, that we have to, we have to, have to change the way we look at things and the way we do business, way our government works. We, you know, it, it's just, it, it, you know, they, they can say what, all the great things that's going on, but it hasn't changed.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you.
Yeah, we do actually reach out to all of our local colleges. We do have internship programs, and, um, we partnership with a lot of different, a lot of different colleges throughout our communities. We're always there. Our door is open to them. We meet with the deans of their schools, and we're always looking for ways that we could work with them to make sure that the children, the students are provided with a quality education that will conform to the positions that are in our community. So we are trying, we are working on that every day. We recently had a meeting with one of our local colleges. We might be developing, um, a, a certain Act one-twenty type of situation that we can't get into too much detail at this point. But we are working with the colleges, and we are looking to keep our best and our brightest in our community. And that's just one of the ways. Our doors are open. We do have the internships, and we do try to produce quality edu, quality opportunities for the educated college students of our community that want to stay in Lackawanna County.
Okay, thank you. Tom, this next question will go to you first. What is your assessment of the current state of the county's emergency services and safety department? Do they have the budget? Do they have the staffing that they need to do the job, especially in today's climate?
I believe they are a very fine organization that has not had any major issues that I am aware of. They have been funded properly through the county over the years. They have a brand-new facility. They exceed the needs of the citizens of our area. They, uh, hopefully they have the, all the necessary tools. If and when I become county commissioner, I will guarantee that they will have all the necessary tools to do the right job. You know, they are one of the most important assets of the safety of our, our community. And the last thing you will want to happen is that an incident occurs because they're not trained properly, they don't have the right equipment, that God say, you know, God, that it happened, that someone died because of an unfortunate incident. So I, I would say that they are as good as anywhere in the state of Pennsylvania. We've been very blessed that they've got to that point, and I would do anything to encourage them to, to grow further. I would give them the training. I would give them the tools, the know-how, and they do a wonderful job.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you.
I, uh, think they do do a great job. Uh, it, it's not something that I have been actually thinking about. Again, I have to run a business every day. Uh, I, I'm, it's not something that I, I feel it's important, uh, but my issues are economic development and taxes at this point. Uh, again, it's not my full-time job to understand all the current situations in county government. Not that it's that hard to figure out. When I was elected Register of Wills, I didn't step foot in the courthouse for the first time in my life until I was sworn in. I fixed the place. I didn't run free election. I wasn't looking for a job. I did what I had to do. I left. Uh, I ran for mayor of the city of Scranton. I won a Democratic primary. I lost to Jim Connors, uh, and I went back to the private sector. I work every day. I have a business. I have to support my family and my employees. I still pay their health care. Uh, I, I work every day at it. Our problem comes down to taxes and economic development at this point. From there, everything can grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you.
Could you re-ask the question?
Uh, what is your assessment of the current state of the county's emergency services and public safety department? Do they have the budget that they need, especially in today's climate?
Uh, our nine-one-one services do a fabulous job. Uh, first and foremost, that is the line between life and death. Our dispatchers are making sure that our fire departments, police departments are being called immediately and sent to the proper destination. We're always working to broaden the opportunity there for there to be a faster, more expedient time. Right now, at this point, we are able to text. You could text to nine-one-one for a faster, even more efficient opportunity to get your loved one to a hospital or to get a fire truck to your home if need be, if there's a fire situation. We have great dispatchers. It's not an easy job to be in nine-one-one services. That is probably one of the most stressful positions there is in Lackawanna County, to know that when the phone call comes in, you can be the difference between life and death. And I think we do a great job at making sure that it's life.
Thank you. Jim, the question to you, please.
Well, thank you. First off, we do have a state-of-the-art facility. It's one of the nicest in, in the state. Currently, right now, both Pat and I are working with CCAP, which is the County Commissioner's Association of Pennsylvania, to lobby our state legislature to increase funding for nine-one-one services. Because what many people may not realize is that we spent about one point three million dollars a year on general funds to operate the nine-one-one on top of the money that comes in from the state. State funding hasn't kept up in years, in years to the, the need at nine-one-one. But also, when we keep talking about doing things differently, this brings up a great point. We are the first county in the state to offer nine-one-one texting services. I'm not sure if how many people are aware of that. We put that out in our newsletter. That's why we put it out, to help, help communicate. But nine-one-one texting service, that means if you're at a roadside accident, you see an emergency, you can text and immediately it goes to, it goes to our nine-one-one service so they can respond. The first county in the state. We are not sitting on our hands. We have a hundred and seventy-five million dollar budget. You have to come in, you have to have experience, you have to know what you're doing. All four candidates at this table have private sector experience. We all have been involved in a small business. But there's only two candidates that have experience being a county commissioner. And I'll tell you what, it's tough, and you have to be well-versed in many issues because every day doesn't come in and you have to focus on economic development. Every day doesn't come in that you have to focus on something else. You have to put out fires. You have to save lives. You have to focus on many issues that impact us. And you know what? That's why you're not complaining about county services today, and you're not complaining about county government, because Patrick O'Malley and Jim Wanzack are doing our jobs that you elected us to do four years ago.
Thank you. Jerry, this next question, and unfortunately, I think it's going to have to be my last one before your closing statements, will go to you. And I'm running short on time, so I'm going to cut your time down to one minute on this one, and I apologize for that. I want to talk a little bit about the environment. What should the county's role be in ensuring soil, air, and water quality and promoting sustainable land use? And are there current county policies or programs that need to be changed? And are there current county policies or programs that need to be changed?
I personally oppose the landfill expansion. I think we're limited in what we can actually do. The DEP and EPA are in charge of those functions. I think we can encourage them to do their job properly, as Senator Casey has stated. I've taken a position on that. I have said it from the beginning. I'm fine with what I say, and I continue to stand where I stand. I'm not changing my view on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you, please.
Our conservation district, we actually provide $500,000 for the conservation district. We're recycling. We have West Nowell, but the air and water is actually covered by the state. And just to go a little further with the idea of landfill, I'm not sure if anybody recalls, but I was probably the first elected official to come out that I was in opposition of it, and it could be a monument to out-of-state garbage.
Thank you. Jim, the question to you.
Can you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry.
What should the county's role be in ensuring soil, air, and water quality and promoting sustainable land use? And are there any current county policies that need to be changed?
Our role right now is to follow the guidelines that is put out by the state and the federal governments. We have to abide by the Chesapeake Bay requirements that so many people will realize on your sewers and discharge water. And if anybody's never been down to the Chesapeake Bay, you realize that our streams right here actually end up in the Chesapeake Bay, and it's very important that we pay attention to that. You know, serving 10 years in the State House, I have a lot of experience with it. I have over 90% environmental record. So the only candidate here at the table that can say that, I'm not saying it, I have experience doing it and in action doing it. And one of the things that I want to talk about my last minute here on this is to go back to reassessment, because I think it's very important that we talk about that. If you reassess, you got to spend $8 million to get $1.5 million back. That's the 5% rule, and there is state law that you have to follow. Then you have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in order to keep up with that.
Sorry.
Can I use my minute to continue on that?
At this point, we're running really short on time. Sorry. Tom, the question goes to you.
Well, you've touched on something that is very personal to me. I have lived with the marginal situation from when I was a young man. I dealt with the cleanup of the marginal situation, and we didn't get the cleanup that we should have got, and I have people that are still scared about the marginal situation. I have dealt with the landfill for 22 years. I know what goes in there. I know how it could hurt the children. I know how it can hurt everyone. I read the reports. I know how to analyze it. I know how bad it is for everyone. I have been the most vocal of any candidate and local official in northeastern Pennsylvania for many years in regards to anything in regards to our environment. And I take it personal, and I would do whatever is necessary on my behalf as a county commissioner to ensure the safety of the citizens of Lackawanna County. The landfill must close, and it will close.
Thank you. That unfortunately concludes the time that we have available for questions. I have about 17 more I could ask you, but with that, we'll move on to closing statements. Each candidate has allowed two minutes for a closing statement, and the first closing statement, by luck of the draw, will be Jim Wanzek.
Again, thank you for the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. We all appreciate that, to the University of Scranton, and for all of you for coming out and taking time out of your night to hopefully hear a little bit about the issues that are impacting Lackawanna County. Four years ago, you asked us this question. You asked Pat O'Malley and Jim Wanzek and the other candidates on the stage, what would you do if you were elected county commissioner? You remember that?
I do.
And what did we say? We said we would create jobs and focus on economic development and improve government efficiency. Why I'm proud to say that here we are, three years later, and we've done that. We developed an economic development office that did not exist in Lackawanna County. We consolidated offices to bring that together using savings by thinking outside of the box. We invented a community reinvest program that has put over $1 million in county funds back into your communities. The most important part about that, though, it's leveraged over $5 million in private investment to improve your communities. Over 60 communities have been approved in Lackawanna County because of that. That's a quality of life issue. We turned a $1.8 million budget deficit into an $8.4 million budget surplus. We didn't do that by just saying, "Things have to change. Let's not do things similar." We did it because we worked hard at it. We worked hard. We watched the books. We lived within our means, and that's what we did. You know, some of our opponents want to sit out there and say, "Well, we've raised taxes 43%." That is a flat-out lie. Let me say that again. It's a flat-out lie. And the newspaper and Scranton Times and other media outlets have picked up on that. What we have done is we have lived within our means. We have created nationally-recognized economic development programs. We have stood by our actions, and we stood by what we said we were going to do four years ago. So I'll end with this. Four years ago, we promised to move Lackawanna County forward. Today, we're here to say that we honored that promise.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for Jim Wanzek? Tom, your two-minute closing statement, please.
We have four good men seated at this table. None of us are perfect, but we have four good men sitting here. Each one of us has qualities that make us stand out above one another. I believe the qualities that I have make me stand out as the best candidate for county You know, this gets very personal. And Jimmy, you said that you have an $8.4 million surplus, and that bothers me because effective government means raising revenue and spending that revenue. There's no such thing as an $8.4 million surplus. That money should have been spent. It could have been used to go against the long-term deficit, the $200 million that we owe. It could have been used to reduce taxes. It could have been used to help the social services of Lackawanna County, the services that provide the necessary services to the people that cannot care for themselves. And lastly, Jimmy, you had the money. You had the money to do reassessment. You could have started it. You could have finished it, and you could have implemented it. The people of Lackawanna County could have been standing in that batter's box, and every one of the people in Lackawanna County could have been wearing baseball spikes. Well, that hasn't happened. They're standing in that batter's box, and many of us are wearing sneakers. You know, that $8.6 million, I keep coming back to that. Everyone knows why it's there. It's a ploy. It's to make it look like Lackawanna County has so much money. It's the opportunity to borrow more money.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for Tom Lukasiewicz? Thank you. Jerry, your closing statement, please.
I never said that they raised taxes 44%. I said taxes have gone up 43%, 44% since 2011. It's easy to do good things with a lot of your money. Things should be done properly. They get paid every day to do that. That's their job. Taxes have gone up, whether they like... Property taxes have gone up 43% since 2011, period. People can't afford it. That's it. They can't afford it. A person shouldn't have to choose between paying the property tax and buying their prescriptions or buying their food, elderly, people on fixed incomes. It's not right. We have to think differently. I'm not looking for a job. I'm looking to do a job. Thank you.
Jerry, no theory in. And finally, Pat, your closing statement, please.
Me and Jim Wanzek work every day on behalf of the 214,000 citizens of Lackawanna County. Our job is to be effective and efficient every day. We have no other option. Past administrations have put us into debt. Approximately $19 million we pay out on debt service every single year, not because of us, because of past administrations. And Jerry's right. He said himself. We didn't raise taxes. Right, Jerry?
You did. They did raise taxes.
Okay, well, I didn't raise taxes, but you know, I got actually put into that situation too.
Since 2015, actually, but that's another issue.
But with that being said, the $8.4 million fund balance, you want to have that. If there's a circumstance or a situation that occurs in government, you want to have a fund balance, because then you have to go into debt. And this administration isn't about going into any more debt. We're about making sure the Lackawanna government works on behalf of its citizens every day. And you know what? We could sit up here and we could talk back and forth, and you know, Mr. Lukasiewicz, you're right. He's the person who's at the forefront of the landfill. He's fighting landfill. But he's not explaining the part that in 1999 that he voted for the expansion. He must have forgot that part. But you know, maybe as of this point, it's something that maybe he should relive that moment and then talk about that at any type of future debates or conferences that he's at. But that's what it's about. It's about remembering what your past is. And I know what my past is. I know what our past is, and I know what our future is, and it's moving forward, and that's what Lackawanna County government needs, moving forward every day.
Thank you. That concludes our debate this evening. I want to thank all of the candidates for their commitment to democracy. It takes a lot to put your hat in the ring and run for office, so how about a hand of applause for everybody? Please remember, we're the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. We're an all-volunteer organization. We invite you to join us. There's a membership application in your program, and if you support the work that